June 10, 2025, meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. The first item of business is the discussion of a bill dispute, and we have a customer here to speak to us. Would you approach the microphone and provide your name and address?
I'm Robin Tyler Painter, and I live at 2704 South Golei Road. All you need for that.
Right ahead then.
So, basically, I bought an investment property at 1567 South Round Barn Road. Closed on the property in September, took possession from, his name's James Michael Loring, he goes by Mike Loring, but his first name's James. James was the previous owner, and he had, like I said, he'd lived there until he was out on October 1st. So, the property, as soon as I took possession, we started gutting everything, so there's nobody living there. It's on a well, so it's got the unmetered sewer service. I've never lived in a sanitary district, never bought a house in a sanitary, you know, always owned in the county on the well service and septic service, so wasn't aware of any contractual obligation for a bill for sewer services if you weren't living there. And I apologize, I'm kind of halfway prepared, but I don't have my bill. I'm going to have to open up my email here when I emailed Mr. Smoker. Sometime around the beginning of May, in the first week of May, or possibly the second, I received a late notice over at my legal address, which is the address on file with the tax assessor's office and all that for everything at Round Barn Road for, oh gosh, $500 and some dollars. That's like the one thing I did not bring with me is that bill, so I apologize for that. Which, basically, I contacted Pat and asked if there was any way to contest that, or if there was, you know, what the reasoning for billing on a property where nobody lives with sewer service, which makes sense, you know, it's the maintenance and availability for the service and et cetera. So, I understand there is a way to put a valve in and turn off the sewer service in certain circumstances, but it's not cost effective by the time you pay a plumber to dig down and install a shut-off valve to your sewer line. So, basically, I just want all the ability to get all the late charges and associated fees off of that bill, so I can get it up to date and keep from getting a lien on that property.
Thank you. Denise is our, I don't know if you've spoken with Denise before, but she's our...
No, I don't believe, I couldn't help...
Billing.
Probably when I called, and he said he'd have to refer me to Pat, which, it was just, I was trying to see what, if there was any way to contest that bill, and you told me it would have to be to go to a board hearing, and I needed to talk to Pat if there was anything he could do first.
I did go through the account, and unmetered's being that, as everyone remembers, we don't have a way to acknowledge when properties sell. Until recently, we are purchasing deed records from the county. But I read back through this account, and the Loring gentleman had called and said that he was selling the property to Mr. Painter, but he insinuated he was staying. And so, the bills, when I went back through and printed out the bills, and I gave you guys copies of the bills, it showed the bills were going to the Round Barn Road address to Mr. Loring until he called in again, but he hadn't made a payment. It was like March, and said he's moved. He's moved, he's no longer there, it was the owner's responsibility, and that's when those bills started going to the, Mr. Painter. And I believe what you're referencing, you may have received, was what certified mail came certified.
Yeah, yes.
That was the, that's sort of the only thing you mail out certified is the, when we're getting ready to place the lien. And when he initiated the contact, of course, we don't place the lien, it stays on hold until we come to an agreement, or he comes before you as the board. So, there is no lien. The property does receive monthly billings, and it's currently up to $570.33. There is a six, about a $7.00 a month penalty that, I believe, Mr. Smoker had agreed to remove all those penalties back to then, when he purchased the property in September of '24. But there hasn't been an agreement on the unmetered fees that have been charged, but nothing has been leaned against the property at this time.
So, are we to assume that up until March, or whenever, when Mr. Loring contacted you, that the post office would have forwarded the bills to him because they were in his name, but it to his address?
Yes. I believe Mr. Painter said that you haven't received anything.
The only bill that I received, and I received one between then and now, you know, it was like the...
Disconnect notice that goes out, is that what it would have been?
More than likely, which...
It looks like one should have gone to you dated March 28th, because it's in your name and the Golei Road address.
Right, which was after I'd called to set this meeting up. Right, no?
No, it was before. There was three, I remember, right, three bills?
So, if there was one that was out on March 28th, I never received that?
It would have been March, April, and May.
Yeah, March was...
Those aren't certified, they just go out regularly.
But it went in your address, your 2704 Golei Road address on March 28th?
And that would have been the timeframe that Mr. Loring called in and said he no longer lives there, which told us he was getting his bills, those bills that were prior, but you had said he left on October 1st.
Right, yep.
So, I'm not really sure what he was doing when he called us and told us he was still living there, but...
He's an older disabled gentleman, so, not sure. But, yeah, so, basically, the only thing that I'd received was the certified mail, and I can't say if it came to my house or didn't. I've got four kids and a recent ex that just moved out of the house out of nowhere, so there could have very well been bills coming for me that were misplaced. So, yeah, and there was also something I was wanting to request, is if there was any, there was any way that that monthly service could be reduced until somebody's actually living in that property?
Pat's best at explaining our situation we get into with unmetered. We have a few, a handful, because we don't have the staff to try and man when we shut properties down that are unmetered. And if you would explain, you got permits to kind of work with us.
Yes, we've, I know the district had tried that part in the past, and there's been several things that were attempted. There was where we would cap lines to that extreme and/or just let someone tell us. The problem is whether it was malicious or not, most of those systems did not get reported. There was times where somebody's just having work done, and a plumber comes in and they take the cap off, and maybe they don't communicate that to the owner or whatever, but we would find out sometimes several months or a year or something after people started reusing the service. So, most of those efforts kind of fall back to an honor system and a communication system that hasn't been real reliable, and we don't have that ability to really monitor that day-to-day for every unmetered customer. The only method that we've, that we're currently trying now is if the health department and/or either county or city building inspectors have deemed the property uninhabitable, in which case, they would have to sign off on habitation, and they include us in those. We have a clear metric system of occupation. As of right now, it's the only one we're still allowing for a reduced, or, and it's a whole wavel of the fee under those situations until we would get those permits back, that occupation is in there. That's the only method we currently have to prove or disprove clearly, and/or to have just guaranteed communication. Again, I'm not saying that most of, that even in the cases that failed, I'm not saying people did it on purpose. I easily see that six months down the line, and you're having, you're working on a property all the time, and there's lots of different contractors that, you get wired and you just don't know, or that just gets lost in the shuffle. And that's really our problem, too, is we just don't have the ability to keep continually checking on this. So, the only two systems we currently honor are the health department and/or building inspector permit system.
Well, as this issue was presented to us a while back, I started doing some investigation, and much as we'll see on the early page here, anytime, you know, like if I looked online and I looked at a house for sale, it was very clear that it said it was city utilities, it was city sewer, or it would say it was on a septic. So, it should be, you know, very clear to a purchaser that, you know, that there is a service being provided by the city if it's on a city sewer. And I see that, you know, in the documentation that we got here from your property record, that it does say that it's, it's center sanitary, that it's on center sanitary. I also, you know, looked back to the code, and I don't see anything in, you know, in the Indiana code that sets up this board, that gives this board the right to, you know, it gives us the right to set the rates and let's, you know, the city have the services to provide to bill for those services. I've been on the board for, I don't know how many years, has it, have we ever denied or have we ever adjusted a billing?
When I looked back, there was, there was one, and I was going to state this, there was one situation, and it was an error on our end that allowed us to do an adjustment. And when I was trying to audit through this situation, I feel like our only leeway would be, and I haven't, hadn't even talked with Pat about it, was the situation where the older gentleman was having us send him information until March. Now, at March, there would have been a delinquent notice that would have went out regardless to both the previous gentleman and Mr. Painter. So, I feel like we have a little leeway of it could have possibly been an error on our part to take that gentleman's direction instead of checking the county records at that time.
So, you're saying that Mr. Loring did contact...
Yes, he called, he spoke to one of my ladies. Every time anyone calls in, and I do see, I talk to you, I apologize. I'm reading the notes back.
I'm sure.
He talked to one of the ladies and said he was, had sold the property, but he was still living there. And so, we really should have checked the county records at that time and confirmed he not, not going to that gentleman's records.
But if he, with, how would the county know if he had sold and, but was living there?
Well, if the county, if, at that time, she should have checked the county, she should have thought outside of the box, this is unmetered, I need to confirm that's, that is a new owner, and got that owner logged into the system. Did we make a mistake on that end? Yes, we did. We should have made sure on unmetered's. The unmetered gets confusing. And so, like I said, with having, working with the county, Debbie Teeman has been a great help with the reports we're paying for now. We'll see every account, whether it's unmetered, metered, whatever, any deed that changes, it's more work, but it will help us in outcome. So, if she would have changed the owner at that time, any bills that Mr. Loring would not have paid, he would have had also as owner.
They would have either gone to him...
And Mr. Loring, yes.
At the...
At his correct address.
Correct address, his home address.
So, I feel like if...
That was my question, is if, and I wasn't thinking of it when you said the dates, but if during March through the certified mail, if those bills were being, had my name on them being sent to the South Round Barn Road property instead of Golei Road?
And beforehand, that's where all the, so, my suggestion would be at March, the March through current is ultimately, you should have known about them. The September up to February is duly, could be foreseen as an error on our end.
When he helps, greatly appreciated, because...
Well, I was going to say another, another thing that I have done in the meantime was spoken with some Realtors, and some of the Realtors, you know, that I've spoken with are longer term, more my age Realtors, and they commented that, you know, they are aware of the issue with who's on septic, who's on the, on the cities, and that, you know, a lot of, there are some cases where it's not even known which is which.
This is all my stuff from the real estate purchase and even the abstract, and there's not a single thing in there about a contractual interest for the, for the, you know, sewer service, so...
It's not necessarily, it says contractual, it just says, what's the service?
Right.
It'll say, you know, like, like it says in here.
Right.
Even if you look online to look at a property sold, if you scroll down, it'll say, you know, Richmond's, you know, sewer system, or city sewer, or septic. So, it's, you know, it's usually clearly out there. They mentioned that in some instance, you know, the owner may not even know, and that you're, you know, if you're buying a house one way or the other, and they don't know. Obviously, if somebody's receiving a bill, hopefully, they know they're on the city and that they are in fact on the city. Their comment was, we have a lot of younger, newer Realtors, and that maybe we should somehow get the word out to them to make sure that they're, I don't know if it's just a notice that goes to the local Board of Realtors meetings or something to say, you know, this is something you need to make sure that they know, that there is a fee and, you know, register, you know, that there is a fee for getting the service.
There was a Realtor at a community meeting that I went to that asked for us to participate in some sort of packets they present.
Okay.
But we do work with a lot of the older Realtors on researching. There's been some that, like you said, the owners don't know that if they're on sewer or not, so we test them while they're listing the homes.
Yeah, I talk to Realtors all the time.
Yeah, I know, Realtors, but she's right, it's most of the Realtors that are, have been around for a long time, I don't know that the younger ones know of the different situations, like you may have a house right in the middle of town that's not on city sewer, or has a well still, it's unusual situations, but...
Any other comments?
I would agree with Denise's assessment. I hadn't seen that until just now, but I have no issues with that. I mean, that would be something I would assume if Walt cleared it last time, but maybe something that AJ would ultimately need to be, to review before a ruling, if that was a case that the board wanted to make, but just to make sure that it does fit in with codes. Sometimes codes change. I don't know how long ago that's been, but that's probably been at least five or six, seven years ago, and I would want to verify that. But I don't have an issue with her assessment, that I could view that the bills are going to the wrong place from September to, through February.
Any thoughts?
I'm in alignment. Do we have legal write-down, or do we...
Well, I don't think we do.
Okay.
Should I, well, I guess, or can we make a motion, something to the...
To the, on AJ.
Yeah. Depending on AJ. So, up until that we would waive the, I guess, basically, you would pretty much have to just sort of start again at March to what the fees were, the new...
March 28th bill forward. So, there's a March 28th bill, an April 30th bill, and I'm sure there's a May bill, not on my printout. I printed this out before. So, it would be saying that March 28th, 2025 bill of 68, 67, and then for the months afterwards would be his responsibility. We would be removing, we would remove September, September 27th, 2024, all the way to February 26th, 2025.
So, the top of the bill date, March 28th of 2025, says previous balance of $412.38. So, basically, that would go away, and then we would start a new March, April, and so And obviously, pending review by law.
Motion?
Motion, did you make that?
Sure. President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey.
A motion for an approval and consideration by legal to reevaluate the bills to remove the, the fees associated with this address between 9/27/2024 and 2/26/2025 in the amount of $412.38. From that point forward, the bills that are attached would be the responsibility of the current owner. And this would be pending review by law to make sure that it's permissible.
Okay, and I will second the motion. I'm not sure if I can restate all of that. There's been a motion and a second, pending approval by law to waive the charges up through February 26th, 2025, and begin the charges effective March of 2025, being assessed to the new owner, Mr. Painter. Did I get it all in? Any other questions or comments?
Sounds more than fair, and I appreciate the consideration, your time.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Would also like to point out that you can have your bill automatically withdrawn from your account. You can get it emailed. You can set up a variety of non, non-written notices.
But I'll be in touch.
All right, all right. So, do you have my phone number in the, in the records there?
I have your email.
Email's, it's one of those things I check periodically. I got my work email and personal email, and four kids and a single dad, so, if you would, if you wouldn't mind just to shoot me a call, I check those every couple hours.
You want to give me your number, you reminded, you're on.
Okay, yes.
On TV, or you want to write it?
Yes, we can, we can move on the agenda, and you can get...
Send that to you. The email? Or actually, I can reply back to Pat's email, and he can send that to you, because I have that one pulled up.
Yeah, so I was looking up, I may, I probably have your number somewhere.
Okay.
We'll get you.
You can just shoot it to me.
All right, so, good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
The next item of business is approval of board minutes from May 27th of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey?
Motion for approval of board minutes from May 27th, 2025, as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve board minutes from May 27th of 2025 as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is approval of invoices from check dates May 23rd and 30th of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Boxey?
Motion for approval of invoices from check dates May 23rd and 30th, 2025. The total amount was $299,225.13. Notables included Andrews Engineering Incorporated for $14,185,045. Keystone Cooperative Incorporated for $44,633.8. Merrill Brothers Incorporated for $102,068.47. And last but not least, Bader Mechanical, Inc. for $11,850.94.
And I will second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve invoices from check dates May 23rd and 30th of 2025 totaling $299,225.13. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the director's report.
Yes, Madam President, board, this will be pretty short. I just wanted to update that we had the extended landfill hours on Saturday and Monday. Seemed to go well. Darren Duncan, landfill manager, said it was pretty light traffic on Saturday overall. There were mostly what people were utilizing was like the free tires, the coupons were in there, which is just somewhat expected. A lot of people, I mean, it is a few extra hours, and you can get it in, but it's not like, a lot of people probably miss a trip to landfill because of a couple hours. I mean, it is more convenient, but I wouldn't expect a lot of increased traffic particularly. It's more of a convenience per se than, than to increase flow. But we did get the tires, you know, and that, that helped out, and Monday was about the same. I think the rain, obviously, kind of pushes people one way or the other maybe as well, but, but overall was, was pretty good event. I'm putting together the monthly report, I'm a little behind on that, been working on the 2026 budget, trying to get that kind of finished out before the end of this month. I need to have that mostly internally completed and entered into the city's BSA software, so kind of, been kind of fine tooth combing that. But from a general look, nothing seems directly out of the ordinary through the reports, but we'll discuss those more when, when I bring them here. The one piece, as we talked about the last meeting, we were light on revenue side for a month there because of the way that data goes back to the city building, and will be heavy this next time that is seen, and we will see that. But we'll discuss that report more at the next board meeting.
Okay. Ready for all the summer construction activities?
Yeah, I hope so, right? Busy, very busy. And I know Randy said we've been busier on special pickup. Randy, the collections manager, and Denise and them have been working through scheduling there. We've been almost full per day for a little bit on special pickups, so it's nice to see people utilizing that service, so. And I think we've participated in three or four cleanups, neighborhood-driven cleanups, where we supply tubs, and usually, like the haul trucks, it's the big, like the 14-yard tubs, and we will drop those on a, like a Saturday, and then collect it on Saturday. But I think we've already done three or four cleanups this year, and there's another one scheduled, so...
So, what kind of size of neighborhood needs they contact you, or I mean, contact...
Yeah, they usually contact myself, or if they're repeat users, they'll directly contact with Randy, and they will work out that schedule. They usually, they put together, I mean, if it's one house, right, you would just do the normal, the normal procedure for getting a tub there, but they usually end up pulling together X amount of volunteers, and they'll usually do like eight by eight or five by five sections of blocks, five blocks by five blocks or so sections, and we'll drop one or two tubs strategically in there where we can and collect them. So, it's nice to see community-driven ones and that accountability, and I think it really helps. Maybe an individual struggles or doesn't know that, you know, what policies are or whatever, but when you have a whole neighborhood and a whole group of people out there and some extra resources, maybe, you know, but you couldn't get it to the curb, or whatever those aspects are, and I think that it's really nice to see those going through, so...
Yeah, that is, I mean, we've talked before, I mean, obviously, it's already June, so the winter's well past, but we've talked before how after, it seems like after the winter, there's a lot of, just a lot of trash everywhere, hidden under the snow or lack of snow that we've had, so, good. Let people know that they can do that. You're done? Okay, anything else?
Reminder, we're closed next Thursday, Juneteenth.
Jesus, June 19th.
It's a hard holiday for people to remember. Elijah didn't remember either.
And this one has not been moved to a Monday. All right, so, when is that?
June 19th, Thursday.
Okay, next Thursday, okay.
What date does trash run to that?
I was like looking at my dates.
Is it the Monday?
The following Monday.
The following Monday, 23rd, I think is the 23rd.
Yeah, yes.
Monday.
So, trash and recycling will be done, not Thursday, the next Monday, the 23rd. 23rd.
Okay. Good reminder. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. And I will turn the meeting over to President Boxey for the Stormwater Board.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Richmond Sanitary District Stormwater Management Board meeting for June 10th, 2025. The first item on the agenda is the approval of board minutes from May 16th, 2025.
President Boxey, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 16th, 2025 meeting as presented.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. The next item is the approval of invoices from check dates May 16, 23, sorry, May 16th, 23rd, 30th, 2025.
And President Boxey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices from check dates May 16th, 23rd, and 30th of 2025 totaling $12,438.96.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. This takes us to miscellaneous. Anything for miscellaneous? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I will make the motion to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much.